This is the monthly meeting of the Dyton Stormwater Committee, Wednesday, March 16th, 2022. We started a little late waiting for someone to arrive. This is also a remote participation Zoom meeting. It is a public meeting being video and audio recorded for cable broadcast and internet posting on www.dytton-ma.gov and YouTube. Zoom meeting number 880-8652-2234. Meeting password 365201, and the call-in number is 929-205-6099. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All, just state your name and the department you represent. We'll start with you.
Barbara Katavia, Water Help.
Pilling, Stormwater Agent.
Phil Fournette, Conservation Commission.
Nancy Gulat, representing the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Pires is not here. Mrs. Katavia is joining us from the Board of Health, and we expect that Mr. Ferry will be here shortly. Did you get the names of everyone else that's present, Mrs. Grassley?
Yes.
Okay. First item on the Committee Business, number A, Review/Discuss Act Railroad Bed Violations. Are there any abutters here to that, the properties? Mr. Mitchell?
Mr. Mitchell.
Yeah?
Ron Spookbaum.
What we're going to do, we're not going to get into individual property discussions today. What we're going to do is, I'm going to ask Mr. Pilling to give an update, and Mrs. Caldonia, on what was found, what the problem is, and then we will be contacting individual property owners to talk about resolution. So I'm going to start with you, Mr. Pilling.
Maybe. Lisa and I have been out there, multiple properties in the area, not any one in particular, and we've noticed that over the years, there's been a lot of fill that has been placed into the old railroad bed, and it seems to be in some locations damming up water, which is obviously a concern to the Stormwater Department. And Mr. Ferry can obviously weigh in on this too, but he's not here right now. But yeah, we're basically trying to figure out why it's there, and, you know, can we do something to make sure the water continues to flow the way it always flowed?
And wetlands are located on the Concom railroad, right or by various locations. However, they haven't been flagged yet. We see that the fill is removed where it needs to be removed. Wetland because it's contiguous to the Totten River.
I draw the blank.
In any case, we just want to see some mitigation for it and if we fix.
Is it my understanding that the Stormwater Committee will deal with this, and you will represent the Concom, or do they have to go before Concom also?
They also have to go before Concom.
Have they been notified?
They have not. One abutter was notified, so we...
There aren't that many. I think there were four letters that went out. Two, one, two, four people in total, three other letters, so I think it's four addresses involved, because one of them's from Pleasant Street. Well, one property runs between county and Pleasant, but there was one home that's, the address is definitely Pleasant Street. Do any of the individuals who own these properties have any questions? Again, reminding you, we're not going to get into individual cases or anything else, but if you have questions about what was described relative to what the problem is, please just rise, state your name for the record, and ask your questions. Enos.
Yes, ma'am.
Name.
Russell Enos.
Thank you.
If we're talking about removing this in the railroad bed, moved in from Center Street.
We're going to deal with the problem that has been identified between county and Pleasant.
I'm making a public...
But rest assured, the rest of the railroad bed can be looked at as an extract. Part of it's going to be a trail eventually. However, the areas that were identified are the four properties that got the letters, and we will not hold off acting on those four properties chasing the railroad bed all the way to Center Street or Totten.
Well, ma'am, it's all part of the railroad bed.
It's not part of the area where the problem's been identified. Sir, Russ, Mr. Enos, I'm not going to argue the point. I'm not going to argue the point. Do any other property owners have questions about exactly what the, you've heard from Mr. Pilling and Mrs. Caldonia, relative to wetlands violations, blocking water from not flowing, so forth and so on?
One more thing.
Yes, sir.
I'm in touch with the state, Massachusetts, the engineer. They are taking responsibility for one more water.
Enos, I'm not going to get into it. I'm going to make this clear. We will meet with you, attorney. By the same token, the other property owners have the right to meet to discuss their properties and let us know what action they've taken or what other concerns they have. So I'm not going to allow you to just do this today, because there will be another meeting specifically with you and your attorney. Yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the US Committee for doing the water. And it's, you know, I was down there yesterday, and, you know, this time of year, there's quite a bit of water in there. It's basically still water, and I was out concerned that we're other people filling in the runoff.
Yes, Mrs. Caldonia.
Do you know what it says?
Article 11, correct.
It's not, it's an article of the town. It's on the court stage, but this is the full bylaw.
So obviously, the conservation bylaw, and then the town's stormwater bylaw and regulations that go with them are all applicable. So they're on the website, Town Clerk's website, and stormwater bylaw and regulations are also on the Stormwater Committee. So if you haven't seen those, you need to take a look at them. So does anyone who owns property in the, one of the four addresses that the letters went to, do you have any specific questions about what has been cited here relative to why the town is getting involved in working on cleaning up the area to get the water flowing again? And what I will say to you is, we will be in touch with you to set up individual meetings. We will deal with each property owner individually. In the meantime, any information you have or information you gather, we certainly would want to see what you have so that we can discuss this and come to some kind of resolution. Okay? Thank you for coming in. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Enos, Mr. Spookbaum.
Thank you.
Sir, are you here for this too?
Oh, okay.
Sir?
Yeah.
Are you here for this, this topic?
No, I'm for a second.
Okay, all right. Thank you. You'd like to come up to the podium, please?
I'm the property owner with my wife there, 2041 and Circle. Moved in in 2004. Between my property and the next one, 2031, is a natural creek that's supposed to come down. Doesn't. It just allowed curbing to let it come out and get out of there, or it'd be a swamp. And it runs down the road to 2051 to the local drain there. After we moved in in 20, end of all of 2024, toward 2025, I submitted a letter to the town saying, you know, this drain, and I got back a letter, which unfortunately I did not keep because it's been a lot of years. They said, yes, the contractor was supposed to put a drain there in 2030, 2041 and 2031, which they did. Busy raising my family workings, my fault, I didn't get back to anybody. Fall of 2019, I went and saw, and Miss Heidi had left down in the planning committee, talked to Mr. Ferry. He came out and looked, and he said, yeah, we can't put a drain there because of the fire hydrants there, water mains, and other stuff. But he mentioned that time, the only thing to do would be possibly do a French drain against the road to get down to the drain down at 2051. I didn't follow up with it. This, about a month or so ago, I stopped by the Planning Commission, I found out that they closed Cedar, Cedar Hills Estate after 20 years or whatever, so they got rid of all their correspondence, deleted everything, so unfortunately I don't have a copy in the record or a letter or anything. But the drainage there, it comes down the roadway, it's unsightly, and in the winter, it makes a... Submit a couple of photos, I think you have for the record on there that shows the drainage and how bad it is. So I don't know what the correct technical solution is. I'm saying French drain just because Mr. Ferry mentioned that. I don't know what has to get done, but the drainage kind of needs to stop.
Okay. Mr. Fenneman, can you wait a little bit? We were expecting Mr. Ferry to be here, and he's the one that should be responding to this. But if you can...
He was supposed to have been here 15 minutes ago, so he's...
He said he was, we expect him here.
Oh, okay.
Okay? So if...
He's on his way. Okay. No, I can wait. Any questions, I guess, before I said?
No, as, again, we need Mr. Ferry's input. Do you have anything on this, Mr. Aguirre, on this site?
No, I just wanted to ask, Ms. Caldonia.
Yep.
Isn't there an isolated wetland behind these properties? Wetland behind these properties, all of the neighboring properties. And I think what's probably happened is, with the change in the climate, the wetland has become oversaturated, and now it's looking for a place to go. And so this may be an ongoing problem. Whereas as time goes on...
Okay. And Mr. Pilling? Okay, all right.
I just want to clarify...
Can you pass the photos around, please?
Whenever the rain came in.
I went up this morning, and it was a constant flow.
I'd like to try and drain that front. Like I said, we had to cut out the curb to get it out of there.
And I noticed there's not much of a pitch between where it comes out and the person hole, the manhole, right there. It's not much, so it does widen out, and it's just nothing, it's flat.
Sorry, and you said it's coming from the north east?
From behind your house.
No, it comes between the two properties.
Yeah.
Joe's in mine.
It's more east.
It comes right down there. It looks like it was kind of a natural creek. I guess that's more east.
Yeah.
Yes, that's me. So it comes down here, and there's a little...
Almost down?
Yeah, it comes almost down the property. No, no, we're dry back up in here. It's this low spot, sorry. You come down in front of the two houses.
Yeah.
It's like a natural creek, because there's a pond across the road. Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions?
Somebody make a motion to table item 4B. I told Mr. Ferry gets here, please. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah.
We have a second, Mr. Rhines. All in favor. Mrs. Katavia?
Hi.
Mr. Pilling?
She's not voting, my bad.
Oh, I'm not, that's right, okay.
She's replacing Mr.?
Yeah, Mr. Pires for today.
And he's not named. It must be a member of the Board of Health. Quorum, but I'm going to allow you to vote.
Okay.
All right? Because it's a member of the Board of Health, and since he asked you to cover, I'm going to let it go. We do have a quorum, so we're all set.
Yeah, I don't want to...
Nope. Mr. Pilling?
Aye.
Mr. Rhines? Cable.
Aye.
And Mr. Fournette?
Aye.
And Mrs. Gulat?
Aye.
So if you want to have a seat, we'll wait for him to come. Mr. Clunin, which item are you here for, or if it's not there?
I'm here to discuss the water main project we're starting up on Main Street.
Okay.
Just that, where...
Well, are we going to need Mr. Ferry for this?
Possibly.
Okay. Let's, if it gets to be too long, give me the sign, which means let's get it done for at least intro. Thanks, Mr. ... Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Aguirre. Ashley, do you have everyone who is on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay. Item 4C, Proposed Solar Battery Storage Unit Regulations. Mr. Hafes, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Who would like to take the lead on this? Because I know Planning Board has regs.
Oh, dressed as a battery chief. Well, Mr. Boswell, the planning action that was taking place where the battery storage SOP was approved, it was worked on diligently by Mrs. Easterday, Mr. Aguirre, some words in that, also myself, along with our fire chief, who was... It is operating procedures to go forward. We're just looking at continuing the language, the language that was set in place, it's standard language that can be used going forward, but we need that language going further. If Mr. Aguirre has anything to add, I'd like him to add it.
But the operating procedure is going to be by way of regulation, so, and our current bylaw is allowed that, so we thought that was a much cleaner way to do it, albeit we do need to do a modification to the bylaw. It'll be fairly minor in nature, and as I understand it, the SOP seems to be encompassing, accurate, elements are going to be okay.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions relative to the proposal that was presented to us from planning? Now, anyone wishing to have battery storage in the future? Is this going to be a package application, or will batteries be looked at separately?
And there's a presentation given to us where we had a contract to come in, in the applicant, they wanted to do a straight solar array itself, but they in turn had put on a proposed battery storage pad. So what we're looking at is that, the way the bylaw is in between, it would be satisfactory for everyone going forward, so we'll be using the future side of it.
Okay, no, that's fine. So any new proponents? For example, we've got a project coming in on William Street. Are they planning batteries? Does anybody know? They're not?
They're not.
But if they were, and if we hadn't already had a pre-construction meeting, so it's the first time they come forward, if they were going to have battery storage, it would have to be on the plans when they bring them in initially?
Correct. Unless it was something that was proposed that... Things change throughout the process, that will trigger an additional permit by itself and the Fire Department. It will also require modifications to the Stormwater and Conservation. So we hope that this will be captured when the project is originally brought to us, so that we can have one fluid process throughout it. And I don't mean to babble, but is we had an industry that was evolving, where we had projects that were already in play, and then everybody tried to scramble to figure out how to get them in, in the project, and get them online, and obviously, we found out that from a permitting perspective and a public safety perspective, that...
So I just want to clarify this. If I am the proponent of a solar farm and I want batteries, when I come to the town of Dyton, I should have a package including batteries.
Correct.
Now, we do have potentially one on Richmond Hill, who said something about batteries. Whether or not they're going to pursue it, I don't really know, but because, well, that's a few years old anyhow. So if somebody wants to add batteries that didn't originally have them, it's a whole new process as far as now dealing with, after the fact, up and running, that potentially, I guess it's feasible financially to add batteries. So that's a whole different ballgame, and the rules that are set up will handle it so that, again, me coming in first time, I got to have a whole package put together. If, as what you described, that's sort of, that's the next step that you would be looking at, which is the case that you've been dealing with. And then the last one would be, existing solar farm down the road says, hey, we want to add batteries. So everything you've done is going to handle those instances.
Yes, right. And again, this is, I'm sorry, this is the Building Commission who stated that they would have to come in for a major modification in that case, as in Brook Street. They had already set up where they're going to do full of the tank with storage on site without batteries, but then the game changed. Right, so again, if William Street, for example, did say we want to do battery storage, again, they would trigger a major modification, reapply, do all the prayers again, notify abutters, and so on and so forth, and then we start the process.
That's what I'm saying.
The other thing that I'll add, and you correct me if I'm wrong, is that the reason we put so much time and effort into the SOP is all the projects are on the same playing field. What, online and want to add them, they're all going to follow the same SOP, and I think it's not going to waive any of those requirements. The requirements that we set up are going to be the conditions that are on the plan.
Yes.
So everybody will be on the same playing field, regardless of when you did it.
You will all be up.
Okay. I just thought of the fourth scenario. As you know, the word is, and I don't know how good the word is, the word is that there's a potential for battery storage only at a site in town.
Correct.
So what you've got in place would also take care of that.
Correct.
Yes, I would just say this is that, I think going forward, that long before this entity were to say, come to us for a permit, we're going to have all our ducks in a row with all of our... ...bylaw results, and get that bylaw written so we can get the town reading it fast. So it would be an amendment to our bylaws.
Okay.
The workshop didn't focus on the size of the battery arrays. We just focused on the batteries, period. Regardless of whether we had one megawatt or 10 megawatts, we went across the board from a public safety perspective. What do we need if something were to happen on that? Other parameters, visual aesthetics, things like that. So I think we came up with...
It's all.
Okay. So if in fact that battery project, I'll call it, is brought before the town, are they going to have to follow all the rules that, you know, you don't want to see them from the road and all that?
Yes. The answer's yes.
Okay. Okay, all right. There was one other question that I had received relative to the rules. Is Brook Street going to need a new stormwater or a separate stormwater permit relative to the batteries?
So I was going to hold off till Brook Street came up, but I can answer your question. As I understand it, the Planning Board is signing that decision tonight. There'll be a 20-day appeal period. After the 20-day appeal period, that... Electrical permit and the Fire Department for a fire permit on the application, then we will make a determination if a modification is in order or not. I can tell you that more than likely, without seeing it two-dimensionally, there'll be some type of modification that's required either from and/or from Conservation.
Okay.
Because there are other support infrastructure that are needed now for those batteries.
Okay.
It isn't just the batteries. They're there, and we're going to permit them. Procedure and the conditions, there's going to be support infrastructure that may be required, so that will be the trade-off.
Okay. Could I get a motion to take Agenda Item 5A out of order since Mr. Hafes is online, and we're running into this anyhow, so we can get this all taken care of?
So go.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, hearing none, Mrs. Katavia?
Hi. Hi. I'm sorry, I thought you asked me another question.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Mr. Rhines?
Aye.
Mr. Ferry?
Aye.
Welcome. Mr. Fournette?
Aye.
And Nancy Gulat? Aye. Okay. So since we're talking about Brook Street solar, Mr. Hafes, do you have any questions over it?
Yes, thank you, everyone. My question is, and I think I heard Mr. Aguirre, he was cutting off a little bit, but I wanted to understand how does, how will Brook Street be treated here, being a project that has already received a stormwater permit and, like, yeah, from a stormwater, let's start with a Stormwater Committee or Stormwater Permit perspective. What do we need to do to be compliant to these SOPs after they get approved today, like Mr. Aguirre said?
Give me now.
Yes, sir.
Okay. What I said was that the Planning Board, as I understand it, will be signing your decision tonight. There'll be a 20-day appeal period that starts from tonight. After the 20-day appeal period, you can apply to my office for building electrical permits and the Fire Department for a fire permit for the battery storage. Once we receive those applications, I'll make a determination based on compliance with the conditions of the Planning Board, whether or not modifications are needed from the Stormwater Committee and/or the Conservation Commission. If they, if you do, I can't speak for those two bodies, but I'm guessing they'll see you at their next meeting, depending on what you need, and then following affirmative actions by both of those entities, we'll release the permits, and then we'll have our instructions.
Okay. And that permit would be, what, like, what is this permit called, sir?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
No, what, what, what application? Application to install batteries? That would be the application?
Yes, you need a building permit, and electrical permit, and a fire permit. That was not on your original permits.
The stormwater permit didn't include it, just like the panels in the basin, so they're going to need to come back to us for a modification of that.
Right, right.
It's not a new permit.
Right.
As I see it, for the batteries, because it's all part of the whole.
Right. But I want to see the submittal and I want to, I want to model that with the, with the conditions. So we'll cross that bridge in 20 days or whenever you get the applications.
But we also have to wait for the planning board to take action, because that action they take is what's going to bring the next steps forward.
True, the events going forward, correct. After the sequence.
Right. Right.
Okay.
Yes.
I do, I'm sorry.
So from a conservation perspective, the planning board's requested. So we want to see the updated plan with a summary of what the changes are. And then we'll be able to determine and help you on what you'll need to move forward.
Yes, Mr. Frenette?
Also like to get a little more information on the batteries themselves.
Yeah, the, the fire department has those submittals. So what we will do is we will give copies of the permits that were submitted for building electrical and fire to all of the entities that need them.
The fire department has the information on the batteries themselves.
Correct.
What kind of batteries they are.
Yes.
How large they are.
Yes.
How safe they are, that sort of stuff.
Yes.
Very good.
Questions from the floor?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to ask you the situation basis. Are you going to make sure that it's going to be operating properly, seventy-two hours of drainage before any final permits are issued at this project?
Yeah, there'll be no, I've made it clear, there'll be no interconnection, grid interconnection until that storm drain, storm water infrastructure is, is working. Yes, sorry. This permitting is not, you know, a catch-all. This is just to get the stuff that was non-permitted permitted now that they've had their special permit from the planning board. And then we'll move towards getting all that inspected. My hope is they'll deal with the stormwater problem sometime between now and then, but I'm out of control of that.
Mr. Hafes, do you have any more questions?
Just a comment or a follow-up on that, Mr. Aguiar. So if we deal with the stormwater issue with the basin and all now, can we connect the site without the batteries?
The answer is no.
If we don't install the batteries?
Sending a permit to me. Year and a half to get this stormwater basin figured out. All of a sudden, you're going to get this magically fixed in 20 days?
No, if, if we do like 20 days or 30 days, if we get it fixed without the batteries and we don't want to install the batteries, can we connect the site or not?
I've given you your path to compliance. If you get the stormwater basin fixed and this body says it's working the way it's supposed to, then I'll consider your question. Until then, I'm not going to answer you.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, comments from the committee?
I'll just say that I've gone by several times and the basin's full to the overflow and it stays there. Still, we really need to get in there and dig some holes. We got to get this thing working. We can't keep going like this.
Mrs. Bosa-Lay, or Mr. Bosa-Lay, are you there? Do you have any questions or comments?
Well, yes, it was, it was difficult to hear because it was breaking up a lot. But so what I wasn't able to get was, is this changing from an SOP to a bylaw? Or that it was breaking up at that point?
Can you hear me, Mrs. Bosa-Lay?
I, I can, yes. When you come up, when they come up that close, I can hear.
Okay. So the bylaw is being changed to include battery storage. The SOP is going to become a regulation.
Yep.
So we didn't have time to make it a regulation to get Brook Street in front of the planning board. But the same SOP that was implemented for Brook Street is going to be converted to a regulation for the rest of the projects now or in the future.
Okay. And I, only because you mentioned it, so this is for Mr. Reins. Is there me, is there something about this tonight? Because I didn't see it on the planning board thing. I can't hear.
Nobody else? No? Okay.
Yeah, Mrs. Bosa-Lay, there's, there's nothing that will be on the agenda about this. All this is, all this is just the planning board is just signing the documents that have been approved and the decision is going to be, excuse me, going to be signed tonight by the planning board. So there is no action that needs to be taken by the general public. It's just a standard operating planning board procedure.
Oh, so the 20-day appeal does not apply to us appealing?
Yes, it will. So what, what happens is once we sign the, once we sign the decision tonight, they'll take in the 20-day appeal process, which gives the butters any opportunity to make their case again to the planning board.
Okay. Oh, okay. Does this mean you're?
You would have to file a formal appeal with the process through the planning board.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Reins, while you're up there, would you just make a statement about what's happening tonight, since it's an important hearing?
So again, what's going to happen tonight is the planning board is going to be given the decision and the members are going to look it over. The information sent down to us by our office manager, we're going to get together, we're going to do, sign a decision. And also this evening, we are going to be hearing Forest Hill subdivision. It's a public hearing. It's going to begin at 6:00 PM. My intent is to ask the members for a motion to end that meeting no later than 9:00 PM, because there's going to be parents with children in the yard. I'm sure they need to get, you know, home to take care of the kids. And plus I have members of my board that have full-time jobs that also need to get home. So we're going to open it up at, right at 6:00 PM and hopefully end by 9:00. So the only action of business on tonight's agenda is the Forest Hill subdivision.
It's at the middle school, right?
It's at the Dayton Middle School at 1520 Rea Somerset Avenue. And six o'clock is the start time.
Okay, thank you.
Is it all, is it all so on Zoom?
We are, we are, I have made the decision that we are going right to in-person meetings. So again, any town, building, I don't know how the school system is working their business, but I know this, it's encouraged to wear a mask. If you want to wear a mask, then you want to walk into it. If you don't want to, then you don't have to. But you're encouraged to wear a mask. I don't know how the school is working their business there.
Thank you.
Is there anything else on Brook Street or battery storage?
No.
Okay, hearing done. I would like a motion to take agenda item 4B off the table. This is the 2041 Anne Circle. And Mr. Menema, if you want to come back up?
I'm on second.
I'll sit in a second. All in favor, Mrs. Katavia?
Aye.
Mr. Pilli? Mr. Agia?
Aye.
The Reins?
Aye.
Mr. Ferry? Mr. Frenette?
Aye.
Nancy Gulat? Aye. Okay. If you just want to stay briefly what you had, had started to explain so that Mr. Ferry could hear it, please?
Okay. Jim Menema, property owner, 241 Anne Circle, asking someone how to get the property drained between 2041 and 2031. Ferry, I think you mentioned the French drain. I'm not sure.
I'm looking in the way.
But the builder couldn't put a drain there because of the fire hydrant and the water mains that are there. But it's coming out, as I said, it comes out pretty streamy when we get rain.
So you're at 2041, right?
Yes.
Right, because it comes out right at the property line. So the air pipe feeding the water, the air pipe feeding the water out.
I put in a four-inch corrugated drain trying to drain that swamp, the wet container.
Can't put a structure there because that's the water mains written. When you go in, you're just going to create a, you know, water means on the right. Yeah, I can't put a structure there. Committee would decide, oh. This committee would decide whether or not there could be a direct connect to our system anyways. That's where we are now. That's where we matured to. See how, how do we get it to the next basin south? Ways away.
It's probably two hundred feet.
Fifty-two. Fifty-two feet.
I have all my calibrated.
Is that how far it is to the drain it's going to now?
Yes, on top of the ground, yes.
Okay.
Get it there.
What do you get punched the drain swamps doesn't work? We can't do that. The second thing is, do you have an infrastructure on Jenna Drive?
Down, a lot farther traveled.
Because it looks like
I think it's connected north. Have signatures on here. It looks like it's continuous north. That's why the house is like.
Step out of the drive because I'm taking a risk of winding up on Jenna Drive.
Right. I think earlier, I can't remember when you brought this up. I think when the monitoring then, now the road is beyond that, we could go into the road with a structure. There's a couple of torches above the main. But now, now we're digging up the road and you're going to see trains.
Is there a spring? Just trying to get information.
Go ahead.
Is there a spring there standing? You said staining? I know exactly what that is. This seems to be like it's underground fed.
My property is filled.
Yeah.
They built a wall up there and stuff. There is a little, it becomes, it's like a basin there that does spill up when it's wet. And then it flows, it's like 30 feet in from the property. I think it's actually on 2031, that property line. And those come down. It's a natural freeze that comes down. But there's no spring further back. My garden's at the property line. It's not muddy. Joe doesn't have a spring further back. So if there's a spring, it's right there. I've never seen one.
Because it's an awful lot of
You are aiming, I know, yeah.
Yeah.
So there's a good chance that the bedding for the hydrant is, that's what it's following getting out of the ground.
Right.
Mr. Ferry, is this a town problem?
But it's coming out of the ground on town property. It's not causing a huge public threat because of the proximity. It stays on the shoulder even when it ices off, but it's, there's some minimal icing.
Okay, but it's not flooding private property?
No.
It's following the natural course to the next storm drain? Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
So
Just doing it on the surface, yes.
What is it that, I'm confused now. When you came before, was your property being flooded? Was that your concern or that's never been the case?
No, no, my property down by the road or that side of the driveway, you can't walk on it, like even right now you can't. Yeah. Yeah. And then again, if it snows and rains really bad, that runoff comes out there and goes right down the street. And I bet some neighbors say, because it leaves a red stain when it dries out all the way down the driveway.
When it goes on the street, I've noticed the street is kind of flat and it goes quite a ways out. And I think, is that the problem you have wide? When it freezes?
It's more appearances and should have gotten taken care of at the building. Because they should have put a drain there.
Mr. Ferry, professional opinion, is there any need for the town to do anything that would eliminate a potential hazard? Because I'm not hearing hazard per se. I'm, I'm visualizing, I'm visualizing Miller's Lane. That's not what we're talking about.
Right. It's not really standing water. It's moving. So it's not really a mosquito thing. Outside aesthetics and the soft shoulders, it's not really a public hazard, right?
Driving in and out, but you know, I was 45 or 48 when I moved in here. Now I'm 67. You know, somebody older, they will not like that, especially in winter. And some people kind of like driving it. I don't, doesn't bother me. Neighbors don't like the red stain down the asphalt, also, I can tell you that.
That's water, I mean.
It's the only place in that development that has it. Yes, it's natural, but it's not, it's
Is that iron?
Problem is because they didn't
Iron?
Drain there.
Okay. Sum this up. And if anyone agrees, disagrees, or otherwise, please speak up. Unfortunately, I don't believe this is a problem for the stormwater committee or the town of Dayton. It would fall to Mr. Ferry's department. And if he felt it's necessary to do something, I believe he would. So unfortunately, I don't see anything happening to correct what a developer didn't do, because it's really not a safety hazard. It's more of, we don't like the looks of it. If, so I don't intend to pursue this further with the stormwater committee. If any members feel differently, please speak up if you've got a solution or you can think of anything other, other way to deal with this. But I have to rely on Mr. Ferry. It's his department.
Just for the record, I don't know your department.
Hi.
Ivy Department, you're right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I talked to the planning. Is this Heidi, whatever her name was, she was there. So and then I met with you in 2019.
Right.
She referred, or the new, referred you. And then I got referred here. So by the planning this Easter day. I'm getting moved around.
I'm sorry, we should have introduced Mr. Ferry when he arrived. I'm sorry for that.
So everyone knows him, but
Yeah.
Sorry.
By the wanted post is in the post office, other than that. Mr. Agia?
Is there stormwater infrastructure within the 2041 pepper chain?
No, but I have. I go to 2019. There you go.
Okay.
Reason why I'm sending you there, you can see the water coming out, running down the road. You see it disappear in the basin.
So there's no stormwater infrastructure there.
It shows up pretty good.
And the drain is obviously there.
No.
Isn't it?
Yes. Yeah, here's finally.
Oh, this is, I don't disagree with you, Madam Chair. If he was to try to capture the water upstream and pipe it on his property, I would consider allowing a connection to the stormwater infrastructure. We'll leave you
What I remember from the last meeting, that's why I waited for Mr. Ferry to come. Mr. Ferry stated at the last meeting or a previous meeting that if the property owner wished to install drainage, he would allow that drainage to be connected to the town's storm sewer system. So that's still available if they wish to do it. My point was the, neither the town or the stormwater committee can get involved with drainage on private property. So if you or your neighbors or whoever wishes to do something, the option is to connect up to the town's system, but the town can't go on the property to do it.
I don't quite understand what infrastructure means under the road. I don't quite understand what infrastructure means, under the road. Under the road, that's why I'm confused.
No, drains, it's not what I just saw.
Right, the base, where the water goes now, on the, on the road.
Yeah.
So continue that pipe that you have, long as it doesn't connect to the house. Continue it down the shoulder of the road, under your driveway, to the basin. Because the way the basin is.
Running along the front.
Right, you have to. So you have to go under your driveway.
I have to cut my driveway.
Right.
You know, excuse me, I know when this came before the board, this committee before, that was the response that was given. And so, as I said, that was on the table then. I don't see that we have any new options for you, quite frankly.
You brought this before.
Did we have a complaint? Because I know I heard of this before. Two thousand nineteen it must have been.
And the records have been purged?
No, no, not, not ours.
The building, no, not ours, the building records for the builder.
Supposedly.
In that plat.
Cedar Hills, I guess, but.
Yeah, it came up before, before two thousand nineteen, I don't recall discussions two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, I don't either.
Yeah, I, this is the first time here, I mean.
Before the Stormwater Committee.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. But I knew that there had been discussion, because I remembered you saying, if they could do something with drainage on their private property, you would allow them to tie into the town's system. Exactly.
Already tied into the town's system. Oh, great.
Does anyone else have anything to add or wish to comment on this? I think if you decide to do something on your own property, you have a solution.
I have to use my neighbor's property also.
Well, again, you can talk to your neighbors, or whoever's upset about the water or the discoloration. But again, the solution is there to connect to the town, but the town cannot.
Just for the record.
Yes, sir.
Solution should have been the planning commission and the inspectors to make the builder do what he should have done before the account was closed. And there needs to be better inspections and enforcement of standards on that.
Okay, I will stop you there, there needs to be better. First of all, this committee does not deal with past decisions. The needs to be better indicates it's not happening now, that's not true. It should have been done, shoulda, woulda, coulda. It should have been done when the development was done. But to say it needs, the inspection needs to be, no, that's current, that's present tense. And that is not the case with any of our inspectors or the work that this committee does. So I want that.
I'll stay corrected for the past. On twenty, when this house was built in two thousand four, when we got an occupancy permit, okay? Nobody made sure the builder did what he should have done, okay? I also, house is settled, so the basement wall is cracked. That's not your permit, I'm not saying that. I'm reading this because I'm for a town body right now. And another part of the town body, not you, madam, did not do what they should do. They did not, I will state in the past. If they do it in the future, I'm happy for the new owners. But that's not what happened here.
No, I understand, and quite frankly, Mr. Menema, this committee would probably agree with you unanimously because since this committee got formed, we've had to deal with a number of issues relative to either, quite frankly, you're fortunate it's flowing down the road. Because the problems that have come before this committee include water coming into homes, into basements, and everything else. So we can only move forward with what's happening now, and we address them as they come. But you're not the first one to speak to us about whether it's drainage problems or something else. And that's one of the reasons why we are also looking at upgrading our stormwater bylaw and regs to make them more stricter, to avoid in the future the kinds of things that are coming before this board that happened twenty, fifteen years ago.
I'm very glad the committee's being practical going forward.
Absolutely.
Very glad for that.
Absolutely.
You can certainly understand my frustration.
Yes.
And maybe in two thousand four or five, I had taken time off from work and come and pursued it with the town, they would have gotten the builder to do something. Shame on me, I trusted City Hall.
Thank you. Senator Klunen is here to talk about the Main Street project, Mr. Ferry. It's not on the agenda, but I'm going to ask for a motion to take Agenda Item Seven, Public Input, out of order. So that he can at least start this conversation. There's a second.
Second.
Motion in the second to take Agenda Item Seven out of order, any discussion hearing on Mrs. Katavia?
Aye.
Mr. Pilling. Dagia.
Aye.
Mr. Rhines.
Aye.
Excuse me, Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Frenette.
Aye.
Mrs. Gulat, aye. Jeff, you want to come up?
I just want to say that the planning board received a couple of emails from a subdivision in town that the roads were not accepted, and it was about potholes. And I just want to make the statement is that if there are any potholes in any subdivision that the roads have not been accepted, it is the duty and responsibility of that contractor to go in there and to alleviate that problem. So I just wanted to just let that be known.
Thank you. Yeah. Raj, you want to pass those boxes around, please? I should explain, you know how I brought the dark chocolate? Well, these are more gifts. And the box of cookies, that was Valentine's Day. They're all individually wrapped, so they're nice, but I can't possibly eat all this stuff.
Must've been forty million dollars, you know?
Oh, as I say, it was a gift.
Could've helped you.
Mr. Klunen.
That big hot, chocolate hot is really good. Got a hard cookie in the middle. Strawberry jam, oh, it's really.
Oh, here we go. Mr. Klunen, what's your say?
Why did you do that?
Here to, to the street, talks with them, obviously all over. Watering on Main Street from Williams to. With our engineers and town. So, here I am with you, telling you our intent to replace a lot of land on Main Street.
Would you say that was from Main Street to where?
So basically the entire length of Main Street.
All the way.
We replaced the whole thing.
Oh.
Exactly, going down to Water.
Water Street.
Water Street.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It starts at the.
River, basically.
The church there, basically.
Oh, the Pleasant Street interchange?
Pleasant Street.
Yeah, where it stops.
Right, there's right, to Pleasant, right. How long is that?
It's still a little over two miles.
Yeah.
Little over two miles.
To an intended.
So are the water pipes from Pleasant to the river okay?
They're all, no, I mean, they're, they're okay, I guess, nineteen fifties.
Okay, so, the. Mr., let me think, which one was it? Mr. Hull from the Board of Selectmen informed me that the Stormwater Committee's got to get involved with the Main Street project. I don't really know why he said that, because we knew we were going to have to get involved. Because I don't know if he was under the impression only Concom would be involved. And I said Concom will be involved because there are wetlands, but it's, the whole place is in wetlands. And since it's probably the biggest drainage project we've had in town, of course we'll be working with the water district. So.
We're not doing drainage. Waterline.
This is part one, and then part two would be.
Part is watering replacement, we have nothing to do with the drainage.
All right, but I'm talking about, when we call it a project, we understand.
Project is separate from the town. I wanted us to be sure that we have, like, our, beginning of our project. Nothing to do with what the town is doing.
Right.
Permitting and all that.
And let them know your timeline.
Yeah, and my timeline is, as far as the SRF goes, I guess we were set back, the engineers had told me we were set back. Seeing the test levels boring and some engineering with that. So we were set back a little bit. So we're looking at April, I believe, if we need to push forward and have bidding out, I think it's April.
I thought it was June.
Isn't it finalized by June? We need to get all this wrapped up by next.
Finalized by June.
So for those people in the audience that don't know what the SRF is.
State Revolver Fund, it's issued once a year through the state, low interest loans. That's what we're assuming for the water main project. So yeah, State Revolver Fund, it's a big deal for us, because it has the potential to become a loan forgiveness. Yeah, we don't want to lose this. And. Engineers, putting it on the engineers a little bit here, because they're the ones controlling all these steps.
If I may, so when you figure out to bid and you're going to have bonds acquired.
Not in there April comes in, so bidding.
So what are you looking at for shovel underground, last shovel underground?
Bidding, bidding has to be done, I think it's by April, and then obviously the.
Shovel underground, last shovel underground, we're looking at eighteen month timeframe, you're looking at, you're looking at a year, you're looking at two years.
We want it to be done by the first. Year. The big stuff should be done by this year, mainly. If they have to come back next year and maybe connect some services.
Yes, maybe I should have started and introduced the project, I think I might have instigated. Originally, we were hoping this would be one conceptual project, mainly for the timelines, for the funds available. When it became apparent, I'm going to slow them down, so we need to separate. But we have been sharing resources, and they've been great at that, also sharing what they have, you know, we, the wetland delineation and all that stuff. You know, we have engineers on our side, they have engineers. Unfortunately, we got to pay two different entities to get this project moving, but it makes more sense now to continue this fashion. My environmental impacts may be more specific, more meetings involved, you know, definitely slowing down. They are staying within the road layout, to give a quick nutshell. I definitely want to enjoy a freeze and thaw after then, before I continue with the road construction upgrades that need to happen. You also have National Grid involved, also still engineering there, infrastructure upgrades. So they're going to be targeting July for the road disturbance. Hopefully, all the permitting and whatnot's in place by then, as Jeff just described. My disturbance doesn't actually happen until early, it's maybe late this fall, but most likely next, next spring. My drainage upgrades and existing conditions, which is finalized, I'm sorry, the drainage upgrades are still to be determined, which is definitely going to be a stormwater issue, because they flow into the water streams and whatnot, my outflows. But that's to be determined, and we don't want to hold up the water district. Their work is going to be right alongside the existing mains, staying within the road layout. So it's more of a repair, maintenance type deal. It's not a new, new line.
Will they need a stormwater permit?
I don't believe so, I'm not the sole person to make that decision. Like I said, it's more of a maintenance or replacement, it's not a new disturbance, they're within the road layout.
Is Mr. Agia coming back?
Yes.
Okay.
Here's our question on disturbance. It's over thirty-five thousand square feet of asphalt they're ripping up and.
Yeah.
Work and then putting it back down. Is this any different than somebody ripping up a hayfield and turning it into a subdivision?
No, it's thirty-five.
Disturbance by our definition. However, I think that the request could be made to waive our fee for it, and we could consider that. That's my personal thing, not the entire board's. But I do believe this would, this is considered disturbance until over thirty-five thousand square feet.
Well, my argument with that would be, they're not changing the surface, so not adding or taking away any previous surface. A subdivision going into a hayfield would be different, that's where you'd be reviewing.
But our regulations don't say where there's no change in the surface, it just says disturbance. Okay, and I'm not saying that you're wrong, I'm saying that the way our regs are written, but this is why we've talked about changing our definition of disturbance, because we have these solar facilities that say it's grass going to solar farm, and there's no change in runoff. I don't believe that's correct either, so.
It's true.
You know, so, we, if our regulations don't describe it, it just says disturbance, so. Like, but like you say, for the permit, there's not much we're going to ask for, other than what the commission's going to ask for for erosion control and that kind of stuff.
Timelines. Yeah, how soon can I get this permit, once I've submitted it?
Yeah, we meet once a month.
So, I know it's not, I know it's, it's two projects. However, my thought is, since you're going to disturb more than thirty-five thousand square feet, meaning the Town of Dayton, and the Dayton Water District is going to disturb more than thirty-five thousand square feet, do we need two permits, or can we issue one big permit and waive the fees and have this, with the Town of Dayton reconstruction of Main Street and the Dayton Water District replacement of water lines, be an umbrella on a permit for however long it takes, so that his could end and he's still going, or he's still waiting? And then you break it out from there?
Well, we talked about this yesterday in our permit review committee meeting, that basically, they don't know what they're doing yet, so we can't give them a permit for what they're doing until we know. But to give them a permit right now for what they're doing, and then a subsequent permit later would make more sense.
Okay.
Because otherwise, we're going to have to wait a year for him to know what he's doing before we can get him started, if we don't want to do.
Okay, no, I understand that.
Waive his fee, I want my fee.
So the question is, how fast can we issue a stormwater permit for what Water District wants to do?
I requested the plans today to talk, so.
Are the plans drawn? Do you have your engineer already?
Well, that's no different than any other project that.
They're going pretty fast, the timelines are coming rapidly and.
Yeah, they are moving very fast.
Not to lose.
It is fast.
Well, if you submit the application three days ago, we would have heard it for them. First time we ever talked this.
Well, I didn't say.
So have you discussed timeline?
Not in detail.
So if you get this to. Now the Stormwater Next meeting.
Yep.
So that puts you a month from today. If it's a problem and you get it to a suitor.
Yeah, I think.
Maybe.
If, if we have to, we can have a special.
We have to, we have to go through.
If we have to, we can have a special meeting to move this through. But just keep in touch with Ross and let us know what's happening.
And stay with us if we have to. Ask, do they can have a separate meeting.
Glad you may have come to Stormwater Committee when we replace the water main event on Main Street, on the, on Sunner Street on that end.
Okay, Wednesday.
Wednesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday.
Just keep in touch with Ross. If it looks like you're going to make that, Mrs. Grassi will have you on the next agenda. If it looks like you're not going to make it, we'll put it down anyhow as an update on the Main Street. If it looks like you're not going to make it, we'll put it down anyhow as an update on the Main Street water line replacement.
And you can file the application yourself. You don't need to pay somebody to do it.
Okay. And Mr. Ferry, we're going to refer to yours as the Main Street reconstruction project to keep it separate from the water main replacement. That's how we'll identify it. So Mrs. Grassi, put that one down too. And if Mr. Ferry has anything to report, it'll be on the agenda. If not, you can take it off before we post it and just keep carrying that one in case there are updates that should be made.
So Mr. Ferry's is Main Street.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Clunin or any comments or anything?
The only other comment I have, okay, so I don't know if anyone's wondering, but we are trying to go a real street reconstruction. Gas has been invited. They do not want to explore extending their main at all. It's beyond their jurisdiction and they don't want to. I commend the Water District for considering their upgrades at this time. And I believe most of our drainage system is going to remain in place. There may be some basins added because of the new requirements for the 300 foot rule. Other than that, we should be in the shape for that infrastructure.
You mentioned National Grid. How many poles are we talking about?
They're looking at all.
They're going to go underground?
No. I, I, I don't think they can with the votes they're sending to Swansea. They were interested in doing a full upgrade anyways in the near future. So I asked them to play nice and say, well, let's try to consider this now.
So they want to put those real tall poles in? Is that what they're looking at?
Well, I sent them the plans that Jeff just got from us. They reached out to me. They will be getting together with me in the near future. Because there is still a question whether the pole is going behind the sidewalk, which is going to be a five foot sidewalk with a two foot grass strip. So that means the pole is going to be way back. My existing drainage and most of it is within that two foot strip. So that's one reason why they may have to move back, which brings in some trees. This is a, this is a big deal.
If they move as quickly as they have on Tremont Street and some other streets, that, that'll be a miracle, but they really moved quickly.
I just have a question. What you want to do is just going to increase the gallons per minute to residence rate?
It's not going to increase any, any gallons per minute. Necessary upgrade to.
See, a break was a consideration, the type of breaks, especially before Jeff was there, elongated cracks. It's not a good pipe. So that's an invitation for the frequency to stay high in the future. So that's the main reason. The integrity, looking at the inside of the pipes, there's not a lot of buildup. The pipe itself looks good, except for when it breaks. It's a, it's a break. That's not a good break.
What we're seeing with this agent pipe, they use lead in the joints. It's not in the water. We're never going to figure out what lead. We have no lead in our water. It, it was, it's a mechanism of pushing the pipe together and then they just push some lead into this. Now they use rubber gaskets. They use lead. It was wartime because they needed the lead, so they need something else. Here it is. What we're seeing is this lead is expanding now and it's cracking at the bells. And that's what you're seeing on William Street with all the holes on William Street. They, they're all linear cracks at the bell of the water main. And it's due to that lead. So.
Gray Terrace?
That's supposed to be. Terrace seems, they seem to be rim cracks.
Yeah, that's mostly the type of film too there.
Yeah.
What did you say they were?
A crack?
Yeah.
That's linear, like Thomas saying, linear cracks, but a lot of them are on the bells of the water main. Together, one has a bell. It's a little bigger and one goes into it.
Right.
Pushing. The lead was designed for the time during the war, around 1950. Is, is.
Turns out to be a bad well, right?
Basically, yeah. And it's, you know, and it's, it's cracking the bells. Or it's just keep tapping them. And they're all bell cracks, which is in your career, you might see one or two. You know, in your entire career, handful. We're seeing three or four of them.
Okay. Anything else on this? Okay, before you leave, Mr. Clunin, I'd like a motion to take agenda item five B out of order, please. We have a motion and a second in discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Katavia, Mr. Pilling?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Ferry?
Aye.
Mr. Frenette?
Aye.
Let me answer you a lot. Aye. Mr. Pilling, you want to give us the final report on Dora?
It better be the final report of Dora.
I want you to listen to this. Mr. Uh, Mr. Clunin, after we went through all of that last summer, it got down to six buildings with three units each. About November, the ad in the paper said they were going to put number seven back in the wetlands. So Mr. Pilling and I and some other town officials have been meeting with the Totten Concom and we met Monday of this month. And we think it's resolved. So that's what I want Mr. Pilling to update the Water District about.
So when they added this in the seventh building, they originally just dumped on all the water from directly into the well. We challenged that stormwater management apply because it was basically a phased project. They revised the drainage to take the roof drains and run them into the underground system under the road. In the parking lot drainage goes into the constructed wetland that they had. So all the water is now being routed through drainage systems. So that there's clean water hitting the wetlands. Took them some doing to move some things around and make some changes, but they finally got there and the Conservation Commission in Taunton was very grateful for our assistance on the project.
They said the Dyton people were very polite and very professional. So you sat through some of those meetings. They did not notify the town of Dyton, Dyton in writing. They said, oh, we sent it to the Water District. So if you would just let the district know, if they get any kind of notifications from Totten or any other Concom, let us know because if I hadn't seen the ad, they would have been doing what they were planning to do. But anyhow, thank you for your participation in the thing early on. And we, we think we're, we're all done until, of course, we'll be back there for Forest Hills, but that's another issue.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you for coming in.
Have a good day.
Yes, done.
Okay, we're going back to four D now.
Yes.
Uh, is this the one that the address was?
Yes, it should have been the Clearway, the Rujo Project, not Tremont Street.
What's the period of extension they're looking for?
They were supposed to start the construction by March 1st.
Okay.
Six months. So they're, it's going to go beyond exit plan. I'm starting this week. Though they've already been doing stakeout, the heat's online here now, but they want to start like any day now, but it's past March 1st. So.
This happened with one other project we had. They missed a.
Three, Tremont Street, which is why it's on the agenda that way.
Yes.
You copied from another one. Yeah.
Accepting motions?
Yeah, but before you make the motion, because this is not on the agenda, I'm going to request that a tentative motion for them to move ahead and that we put this on the agenda for the next meeting to finalize it, but give them tentative approval. Only to take care of the open meeting law and the requirements for posting. Okay. So, Mr. Agia?
I'll make a tentative motion to grant a six month extension retroactively to March 1st, 2022 for the Rujo Farms solar project. Second.
We have motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Cowan, did you wish to speak?
No discussion for me. I appreciate the committee taking this up on a tentative basis in light of the, the agenda. So thank you.
Okay. Oh, Mrs. Grassi, friendly amendment, not a tentative motion, a motion to tentatively approve. Question? Harry Nunroll, call Mrs. Katavia.
Aye.
Mr. Pilling, Mr. Agia, Mr. Rhines, Ferry.
Aye.
Frenette?
Aye.
Mrs. Gulat, aye. Okay, you're all set, Mr. Cowan.
Thank you. I'm going to stay on this.
Oh, that's fine.
Yes, you will be.
Thanks.
Agenda item four E, review discuss act, stormwater agent Dora Estates compensation. What this is about is that we had going back to, now if it's December or November or whatever, when we had to appear before the Totten Conservation Commission, the work that had to be done relative to Dora Estates. That work was done by Mr. Pilling. So, Mr. Pilling, do you have information about the amount of money you're asking us to approve for the compensation for the extra work you did on these?
I do. So it only included my attendance at the conservation meetings in Taunton on December 13th, February 7th and March 7th for a total of eight and a half hours, $501.08.
Okay, so. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the payment of Mr. Pilling for eight and a half hours, $501.08 from the stormwater, appropriate stormwater account to cover this extra work, meaning the attendance at the three meetings we had to go to at the Totten Conservation Commission.
Any discussion first?
No, you're going to make a motion first.
I will. Hours with a payment of $501.08 to stormwater agents to talk.
Is there a second?
Talking.
We have a motion, a second, discussion.
I would just like to say that I was honored and pleased to be a representative along with Mr. Pilling, Mr. Agia, the commissioner, our state chair, Mr. Frenette, our conservation agent, Mr. Ferry. I was also present at a few of his meetings and talking with your hard work that you've done on this for the follow up. I greatly appreciate that being a resident of town because, you know, the sacred ancient water scenario is very vital to a lot of water resource in this town. So I want to thank you for what you've done.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion or comments? Anyone wish to speak? Any questions from anybody that is online while zooming in? I will just note also that when we were leaving the meeting and as I said, the chairman of the Concom thanked the contingent from Dyton and said, we were polite and we were professional. Also, our neighbor to the south, the town of Somerset, was also involved in that. We kept them in the loop on what was happening and Mr. Paul Sylvia, the Water and Sewell Commissioner from Somerset was also pleased with what was going on. So I just mentioned that also. If we have to deal with anything like this again, Somerset's on board relative to this particular situation. Hearing no further questions or discussion, I'll call for a vote. Mrs. Katavia, aye. Mr. Pilling?
I'm staying.
Uh, Mr. Agia?
Aye.
Oh, me? I don't think I should be voting.
Mr., you're right. Uh, Mr. Rhines?
Aye.
Mr. Ferry?
Aye.
Mr. Frenette?
Aye.
Mr. Goo, Mrs. Mr. Gulat, yeah. Mrs. Gulat, yes. So we have one abstention and five ayes. Next item is agenda four F, meeting at Bristol County Aggie regarding the MS4 permit and use of drones. So probably a week and a half ago now, Mr. Mullin, Mr. Agia. No, wait a minute. Mr. Mullin wasn't there, was he? Uh, sorry, that was another meeting. So Mr. Agia, Mr. Ferry and I met with Superintendent Sands and Mr. Costa, the business manager, Mr. Pilling. You already got enough, thank you. Mr. Pilling, he was an add on, an afterthought. And Ryan Miranda was called in to talk about a request that we had relative to the potential use of drones to, for things such as inspection of outfalls that used to be done by students in some kind of a boat, canoe, kayak or some other kind of a thing, which doesn't happen anymore. So it was very positive relative to the school looking into the potentials for the use of drones to help us inspect. And another area that Mr. Ferry mentioned, was it retention areas that you talked about that could be inspected by drone? So Brian Bastarash from the Aggie School, who's in charge of the drone program and obviously is the contact with the FAA is going to look into what can be done because obviously if it can be done, we would make a formal request to the school and it would, I'm sure it has to go before the Board of Trustees, so forth and so on. There's a lot of details to work out because the FAA is involved and the terms and conditions under which they got that equipment. But it was all very positive. So I think that that's probably going to happen. And I will have some kind of a brief mention or whatever in the RMS4 just to show the EPA where we are with moving ahead with different kinds of activities or assistance relative to our stormwater program. The other thing we discussed was whether or not now with the new drainage system on the north campus, whether or not Aggie would get a separate designation for MS4 reporting. Up to this point, Mr. Ferry has cleaned their basins and done this other work, sweeping. You don't sweep?
No.
All right, but basin cleaning. So the, the tonnage of debris was all mixed in with ours and the town of Dyton reported everything. The new campus has a self-contained system and it requires a vacuum truck to clean the basins, which we don't have that equipment. So I followed up. The question was what, whether or not there would be a MS4 designated site for reporting. So I sent an email to Newton Tetter at the EPA and got an immediate response, which doesn't normally happen. And Mr. Ferry and I, I went to Mr. Ferry's office and we called him that afternoon. And he was really interested in this system because it doesn't drain into wetlands. It doesn't drain into a water body and it doesn't drain into the town system. So it truly is a standalone. So in the conversation with Newton Tetter, he said it could be designated a separate MS4, but since the town of Dyton has such a good working relationship with the school, as long as the school and the town maintain that relationship, they will be reported on our MS4. So I sent an email to the superintendent to let her know that when they have their basins cleaned and we need a copy of the invoice for the cleaning, the number of, or amount of debris that is removed, converted to cubic yards. the number of, or amount of debris that is removed, converted to cubic yards, and much are surprised that they're gonna stay with the town of Dayton as long as, again, we have the good working relationship. I asked about when EPA mandates testing for nitrates and phosphate and phosphorus. So, Newton Tetter again said, well, as long as the town of Dayton and the school are working together, they won't have to report separately. So, that all went very well. Mrs., I suggested the school would hold some kind of a workshop if the EPA would like one so people can take a look at the system because it's probably a unique system in that this is how a system is supposed to work, okay? It's completely standalone. So, he thought that was a good idea when we ever can get together for live meetings. And EPA used to have regional workshops that we had attended in various places. Obviously, they haven't been happening because of the pandemic. But Mrs. Sands was thrilled and she's happy that they will remain for reporting purposes, part of the town's MS4, and she's looking forward to hosting them. So, that all worked out very well. And we'll get an update on drones after Brian has a chance to check things out with the EPA. And we'll see how that all goes. Does anybody have any questions, anything about that project?
I just want to thank you, Chairman, for your efforts on that.
You know, it's, yeah, it was, I talked about it, but Aggie recognizes, when they say the town of Dayton, they recognize everybody, okay? They recognize the key people. They recognize the people on this committee. And I'm just glad that we can do something together to continue. I gotta tell you, prior to the Berkeley-Dighton Bridge, this relationship really didn't, it wasn't there. We had the cows come over. So, but it was with the Berkeley-Dighton Bridge project when I had go over there and talk to them about easements that this thing got going and everything has just flowed since that. All the projects we've had, the sewer line, the sidewalks, you name it. So, so I gotta thank everybody because everybody has contributed something. So, that's why when we ask for donations of cabinets or whatever, it's positive. So, they've been good neighbors and we're good neighbors to them. I did tell Mr. Tetter that we had an ace up our sleeve on this whole thing. That ace being the fact that Mr. Ferry is an alum. I'm here chuckling, but he thought that was great. I'll leave it at that.
You graduated there?
No.
Well, did.
I've been on the advisory board for 30 years. But I didn't.
Okay.
And it absolutely, my favorite educational facility ever, other than the Stormwater Committee.
It was because he was on that committee for 30 years that they let Tom graduate, I understand.
Oh, you got a lot of road kills in the museum because of me.
Agenda item 4G, review discuss act, stormwater regs, proposed changes, request for comments.
I'm trying to ask to be tabled until we deal with some of the people in the audience.
Okay. Make a motion? That's a motion? We have a motion and a second to table.
Did I hear a second?
Second.
A second? All in favor. Mrs. Katavia?
Aye.
Mr. Pilling?
Aye.
Mr. Agia?
Aye.
Mr. Rhimes?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Frenette?
Aye.
All aye. Okay, so we're now looking at, are we looking at Spring Street or are we looking at, what are we looking at?
Brooks Speaks Solar, Mrs. Bosale is still in the audience. I don't know if there was someone.
No, we finished Brooks Street Solar.
Okay, but she's still here.
Oh, yeah. She's probably enjoying this meeting.
So, are you here, Spring Street?
So is Mr. Campbell online.
Okay. Okay, so if, you want to come up to the podium?
Yeah, sure.
Please. We're on agenda, item 5C, update, 620 Spring Street Planning Board mixed-use special permit.
I'm Sean Berry from Home Design Group. I'm there for Kiro Maces for LLL City. And myself previously met with Natson and Todd on site to discuss some mitigation stormwater measures. What we're proposing right now, two CDI stormwater treatment inlet units since the four enters the sluiceway system building. Talked about, this was previously proposed as say gravel. We're just gonna pave in the first spots, the first, excuse me, first one spot each row. Was in fire retention rain gardens. One here, one here, one here. This is where pretty much all the natural pre-existing overland flow goes to. So, this is a little mitigated. And the one down here is kinda, we're gonna try and capture some of the untreated Warner Boulevard.
Then said we don't have, we've never seen these plants before.
Yeah, so this is, that was my stormwater permit.
You've been to planning yet? Mr. Rhimes, have they presented this to you yet?
First time I've seen this plan set.
Number one item, the most important item is, everybody gets the same plan, all right? If that's the plan and there are changes made to it, that becomes issue number two. And if it's more changes, it's three. But every time a change is made, every committee you have to deal with has to get that change so that we're not wondering what plan we're talking about. So, it's a good idea to number them and also to date them with changes, okay?
Of course.
Okay?
And, you know, I apologize for that. I do have the stormwater permit stuff for Stormwater Committee, but I'll make sure the Planning Board gets the updated plans.
And did you deliver?
Yeah, so I delivered to selectmen. Yeah, of course.
So, the Conservation just got it delivered today.
Okay, and planning hasn't gotten it yet? Okay, so, and you said you've got the applications for stormwater permits?
Yeah, right over there.
Okay, well, don't rush with that because one of the things that we talked about when, the day that Mr. Pilling and I were up there with you, and you were talking about the paved parking lots with the grass growing up, that you're talking about having packed gravel and not paving them until the time is needed. That's all something that's gotta go before planning, before it comes to us, all right?
But I told him that I don't think the Planning Board would act on a request to eliminate pavement for parking unless this commission gave him a recommendation saying we felt that.
Right, a recommendation, but I'm saying he's got his permits ready and I don't think.
Well, didn't he already file with the Planning Board? Just this planning you have.
Correct, that's correct. They have filed with the Planning Board, we just have not said this.
Okay, all right.
And this discussion had taken place about the natural space, that's why they want to use the gravel in certain areas as their purpose. This is more toward the Warner Boulevard side, in which would be the northwest section of.
Along the river.
It's, it's kinda hard to see from this distance, but pretty much this hatched area right here.
I know you're talking about that.
Yeah, it abuts the river.
So, the advisors, there are three rain gardens or whatever that he's proposing that we need to witness test pits in those locations.
If anyone's been on that property anytime, in the parking lots, there are, I call them islands with vegetation. Some of the trees look like they went through a hurricane. But those areas are also going to be, I'll say, beautified, whether replantings, didn't you? Or maybe it was Mr. Campbell that talked about, is it a landscape architect or somebody that has been working to design these?
That's correct. Back in the day when he had built those parks. So, we want to keep it. Also purchased the open space, which would be of the front entrance of 620 Spring Street directly across. They've also purchased that.
A park?
The park itself.
Oh, okay. Oh, that'll be good, yeah. So, what are the next steps for the Stormwater Committee?
Well, he's filed an application with us so we can put him on an agenda. This was just an informal discussion.
Right.
But it's a public hearing, so he's gonna need to notify others and all the rest of it, so.
Okay.
But we should be able to handle that in April.
Okay, so if you get in touch with Mrs. Grassi at the Board of Health and get these dates set up and you'll be given the information of who you have to notify, we can get this on the agenda. And go from there.
I do have the, you know, obviously I realize it's a stormwater committee meeting, but I do have the stormwater permit stuff with me.
Okay, so you can.
I don't know if that's something I could give you now, Todd.
Yeah, you can file with us. I'll send this even more text and link until we. Grassley, sure is there, I guess.
One thing I saw there that I thought was very unique was the water that flows under the building. I mean, it's visible like in a sluice. That's part of a drainage system. And I guess back in the day, that's how drainage was handled in those old mill buildings that, you know.
Loads power. They diverted the water from the river through the building to power.
Correct. It was for power and for.
Turn a wheel, turn a water wheel.
This didn't look that big. A pipe, this trough, didn't look that big. I was just surprised to see the water flowing through it. You know, it's.
Should be there when the fish run. And the heron come up.
Through the building?
Sure.
Does anyone have any more questions about 620 Spring Street? Mr. Campbell, are you there? Guess you're on your own.
I am here. I don't, I don't have any questions. I think Sean made the presentation we were looking for. The main concern from our standpoint is support of the gravel to the Planning Board.
Well, we can't do that until we put it on an agenda and we couldn't do that until the plans are filed and the application was filed, so.
It, it's just what we wanted to try and speak about today to make sure that, that at least the committee was on board with the concept so that when we made the submission, you know, it went fairly quickly for that portion.
It's where we can discuss it until there's a filing in front of us. This is just an informal presentation to us today, so.
Anything else? Anyone have any questions, comments, whatever? If not, thank you very much for coming in.
Just leave whatever you've got like on that table right there. Lorraine's back. Lorraine's.
Mrs. Bosale, did you have any comments or questions?
No, no. It was only, it keeps breaking up, so I thought I heard my name before. And was it to say that we've already discussed everything we were going to discuss about Grasshopper?
True.
We saw you still there waiting in the waiting room, so we didn't know if you wanted something else to say, so.
No, I just saw it on the agenda, so I was just waiting. So, so I didn't miss anything and nothing else is gonna be said.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Motion to take 4G off the table. A motion?
Motion to table, right? So, I'll make the motion.
No, no, I already tabled it so we could take 620 Spring out of order.
Yeah, so we need to take 4G off the table. Is there a motion?
Mr. Cowan's here, so we're gonna do 5D first as long, continue on the, down through the agenda.
Have a good night.
You too, David.
Thank you.
Talking about?
4G's all 5D.
Okay, so we have a motion to take 5D out of order. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call, vote. Mrs. Katavia?
Aye.
Mr. Pilling? Mr. Agia? Mr. Rhimes? Mr. Ferry? Mr. Frenette?
Aye.
Mrs. Gulat?
Aye.
Well, the, I understand the as-built plan, this is Elm Street, correct? I'm sorry, you guys are breaking up some, so I don't always pick up everything. This Elm Street, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I understand the completion of the as-built plans has been dragging on for quite some time. Some comments were received back from the town and we've been working closely with Borrego, who's been the engineer on the project, the constructor, as you may know, to provide as-built plans that conform with the town's comments and the requests. We had a couple of rounds on that over the last few months and submitted what, what I now hope is the set that, that meets the town's needs, but I'm certainly open to any comments that, that the committee may have.
Yeah, as-built plans.
I reviewed them. I don't have any issue with them, but.
Received a PDF email last Thursday and I haven't had a chance to look at it. I expected hard copies to come in and I was gonna give the hard copies because these are big plans, so, but I haven't looked at it yet.
Okay, you're looking for hard copies. Yeah, we sent, sorry about that. Yeah, we submitted a PDF, I think, on the 24th, but we haven't spoken since then. Maybe I had the date wrong, Todd. I'm not sure. Maybe it was last week. You're right. That was the other thing, it was the 24th.
Yeah.
Right, right, right. So, okay, good. So, you need a, need a full-size plan set and we can get those right over to you.
Based on the last year changes, we should be there. I mean, we're not that far away. It was just a matter of needing a legend on the plan and they still have proposed stuff and existing stuff on top of each other and it was just clean it up and so, but it's, it's hard to look at a PDF to see all that, so.
Mr. Agia?
I'm not sure if I'm out of order, but I really want to close this out. So, if Agent Pilling is okay with the plan set that's submitted and he lets me the Stormwater Committee amicable to, to close this project out?
Anybody have any thoughts? Comments?
Make a motion to approve it based on Todd's final review, the hard copies.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll circle it.
We have a second discussion. Hearing none, I'll call a vote. Mrs. Katavia?
Aye.
Mr. Pilling?
Aye.
Mr. Agia? Mr. Rhimes?
Aye.
Barry? Frenette?
Aye.
Mrs. Gulat?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, you got the okay. So, it's all up to you, Mr. Cowan, to get those plans in.
All right, I'll take that on. Ready.
Now, if you're on the agenda for next month and this is the same project, you're gonna be in trouble.
Yeah, I, I think we're all a little tired of this round. It seems that the last final thing to get done and we're very close, so.
I just want a phase two that we've been waiting for. It's phase two. Okay. So, we're all set on that one?
That's right. That's, that's all we have for us today. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, David.
Okay, let's go back to agenda. Let's go back to Agenda 4G, which was tabled, which is the stormwater regs. Is there a motion to take it off the table?
To move.
You have a motion, second?
Second.
Any discussion, hearing none, Mrs. Katavia? Mr. Pilling?
Aye.
Mr. Agia? Mr. Rhimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ferry?
Aye.
Mr. Fernet?
Aye.
Mrs. Gulat? Aye. Has anyone had a chance to look at these?
I'm going through and marked some things up. I forgot to bring them upstairs with me, but I've only got a few comments on them so far, or I haven't, like, done.
Have you looked at the bylaw and the regs or both are one?
I think it was when we were at Doris State's waiting for our turn.
Yes, I know you mentioned some things to me. Off the top of my head, other than what Mr. Pilling and I talked about while we're waiting for our turn, the, it's clear that the bylaw has got to spell out the creation of the stormwater committee, because once again, a question was raised relative to the authority of the stormwater committee. I thought this was behind us, but it's not. And where it talks about the Board of Health having responsibility for stormwater, I certainly don't intend to change that. But the bylaw will further clarify, we operate under the original bylaw as an agent of the Board of Health. The Board of Health can appoint agents, so forth and so on. That's the issue that's been challenged again, and so that'll definitely be spelled out clearly under what authority we act. I'm going to add language relative to the, and it could be in a, in an intro to regs, the recognition by the EPA and the DEP as the stormwater committee being the official, I'll call it, contact for the town of Dayton for anything relating to stormwater. And then if you, anyone else has comments? If you just take a copy and feel free to mark them up. This will be on the agenda for the next meeting. We will not be ready for the town meeting in June, but by the fall, we should be ready to go because we need to have a public hearing on the bylaw, and we can do the regs at the same time. I think, you know, there aren't a lot of changes, but I think we need to put to rest the authority under which we act. Not that I'm concerned about it, but, because I've heard about it a couple of times, and that would be more to clarify for anyone reading it exactly what the situation is. And to those new developers, proponents, whatever, who think they don't have to come before the stormwater committee, we'll clarify that, too.
Yeah, I mean, I personally, we talked earlier about the description of disturbance, so we can clarify that. I also think there should be some little bit art rules for solar farms, because again, they're just saying there's no change in runoff, and we know that there is because we're seeing it. I also think that if we're going to do this, it should almost be like a standalone meeting just to do this, because after two hours of doing all this stuff to get into this, I know personally I'm not in the mood, so.
And I think the, the whole solar industry is something that was never thought of back when we were formed, and we certainly need to address some of the issues we've had to deal with repeatedly, and certainly things like stormwater basins that, as they relate to solar farms, and somehow incorporate that into maybe strengthening some of the language relative to pre and post-construction things. Just thinking about some of the things that have repeatedly come before us, so. And we may have to, not we may have to, we probably should look at some kind of incorporation of language relative to the marijuana industry, if in fact we ever get, and there was a proposal for an outdoor agricultural operation, I'll call it, even though it's agricultural, and I know that there are certain exemptions in, in stormwater that relate to agricultural uses, but just something we need to think about.
I've rused through both documents, and I think, you know, Mr. Pilling, you're probably agree that I think it's 75% or 80% of the information is based... Certain areas of those documents, because the state standard says 35,000 square feet for disturbance, not that we...
That's not a state standard.
That's ours.
It's our standard, so the state standard is... There is no state standard.
There is. The state standard is generally applies to subdivisions and the number of lots, but any commercial project, regardless of disturbance, automatically trips it, so it's, it's different. But we're talking, for us, we're generally single-family houses that we're talking about, and as we discussed, I think it was at the last meeting, that maybe it should be any single-family house, should get a stormwater permit so that we can lump in when Mr. Ferry has an issue with the driveway, that we can bring stormwater into it, too, you know, that kind of thing. And we're running into it more and more and more that these people are getting closer to the property and building bigger houses and everything else, so that maybe we should reduce it. You're right. We're talking tweets to the rights, we're not talking overhaul, unless we get into the Audubon stuff where they want us to flip our definitive subdivision, which was now our by right subdivision, and then you've got your conservation subdivision reversed, and then make the conservation subdivision your by right, and your regular subdivision the one with the special permit, so that you're getting more open space. That would be a much bigger discussion and take more time, but the rest of the stuff is minor.
Mrs. Grassi, you have that information from Audubon, the suggested changes. If you could send that out, just so that the committee members will see what was in there. That study was done at no cost to us by Audubon. It goes back before the pandemic hit. Pandemic has just added to the delay of us trying to get everything done, but certainly we should look at it, simply because a lot of work was put into it, and obviously Audubon is a respected society in what they do. Whether or not we can use some of it, or none of it, or quite a bit, that's something we'll decide, but each person should see what was suggested. Going back to the, in the beginning, it sounds like something biblical. In the beginning, it was 5,000 square feet in the bylaw. That was based on the town of Plymouth, which sounded very, very restrictive, but when we started out, we thought that would be a good way to go. The next, the only amendments that were made, other than definitions, was to change the size to 35,000 square feet, because the Board of Health felt like there's just too many of these coming in, so forth and so on. But having to deal with problems that have arisen since then, again, we've got to think about what we're dealing with and going into the future, what's a better way to go. So that's how the 35,000 square feet came up. There are some communities that have an acre. You've got to disturb a whole acre before anything gets in.
EPA rule is one acre.
Yeah, yeah. But obviously, we have to look at our experience and go accordingly. So anyhow, that'll be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Well, again, I'd say I personally think it should be a standalone meeting for us to do those.
Yeah, and the next meeting doesn't necessarily mean the monthly meeting. It means there will be a meeting. The next meeting that we'll discuss, stormwater bylaw and...
I mean, I don't know if everybody else feels the same way, that was just my personal.
If we could have a special meeting, I think we could get through it quickly if everybody says, because as Mr. Ryan says, most of it is good. We just need to talk about the changes that, through experience, need to be put in there. Okay? Okay, I think, I think we got through all of four, and we're on 5E, Forest Hills.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Forest Hills will be front of the planning board this evening at 6:00 PM for a continued public hearing at the Dayton Middle School, Lower Camden Avenue, Somerset Avenue. Kicking off at 6:00. My intention is to... A motion to adjourn for, at 9:00 PM. I don't want to keep everybody there all night. Nothing else on our agenda. We had one individual, I want to be on the agenda this evening because of the nature of tonight's meeting itself, so with that being said, 6:00 PM again at the Dayton Middle School.
I'm planning to attend that because I've got to see what's, what's happening. And the Totten Concom continued Forest Hills until at least May, and as I was leaving and they were thanking us and so forth and so on, I said, "We'll be back," because I'm sure we're going to talk about Forest Hills. And I thanked them for...
I'll be back, not "we'll be back."
We'll decide who's going to be back. Mr. Agia?
I, what... We're sent to the planning board today, for today's meeting. Neither one of us could be there, so as I understand it, the office manager will present the meeting tonight. If you wanted to share it with the committee, I can share it with the committee.
Yes.
Okay. And this subdivision is said to be arranged in a clustered pattern and... This full water and sewer services are depicted on proposed plans. A firefighting infrastructure... There are a few questions related to public safety and permitting that need to be addressed as part of this public hearing process. Will there be public or private water and sewer services? Question. The building code mandates access to both potable water and sanitary sewer. Is there adequate water to service the proposed building? Musture developments exacerbate the need for appropriate water. Subdivision meet the minimum requirements of NFPA standards. Not meet minimum subdivision standards pursuant to the town's... System. These are joint concerns of the fire chief and the building commissioner.
When we were leaving the Totten Concom meeting, I thanked them again for continuing to May, told them that we had not seen anything on this yet, obviously haven't discussed it, and we couldn't even tell them if that basin is actually going to be in the city of Totten. So, but I says, "We'll probably see you again," and we left. So I think they understand, too. How can we discuss this when we don't remember what's happening? Where, where all the homes are going and everything else, there's nothing approved or anything else, so. So anyhow, does anyone else have anything on Forest Hills?
Lisa?
Forest Hills, oh, yeah. So we have had our consultants review Forest Hills, but they were on hold because of the planning board changes, or the planning board requests of changes. So it's still on hold because our consultants want to have a site visit. Visit, and then I brought... Consultant had requested the site to be staked before the site visit. So we changed the site visit based on them staking. They agreed to stake the roadway. We'll have them stick... So we can get in there and see generally where things are going. They're still doing that, so that's... And they requested a continuance, so our meetings continue to April 21st.
They won't be coming tomorrow night?
They're not coming tomorrow night.
And there's no reschedule of the sidewalk, though?
No.
So this sidewalk was for the conservation review consultant to walk the site. I know at some point, the stormwater committee is most likely going to want to walk that site also. They haven't filed with us yet, so technically we don't have a mechanism to, you know, to do it on our own, but it would kind of make sense to get out there before all the trees and leaves and everything ticks and mosquitoes and everything else. So I personally would like to rather get out there sooner rather than later. So I don't know if the commission's interested, but to, you know, do ours the same day, obviously we need permission from them to do it because they're not in front of it, she had to have an application. But I would rather be out there before Spring is full on. That's just my opinion.
If we could do it together, if people have the, if we can coordinate, sort of like we did when we were up off William Street on the Reed property, those who could make it came to look at that, and then Concom took that over per se, but we're both going to have a role. I think it's a good idea. The, the marking the road, are they at least going to cut enough stuff so you can walk in there?
I don't think they're going to cut it anymore. They're just going to hang like a ribbon on a tree around a beat down the road.
We'll stake it.
Okay.
I'm sure we could get together.
Well, we need their permission, so I'd like Lisa to ask them to, their sidewalk to allow the stormwater to be there.
Our consultant's going to reach back out to us when... I'll say that we would also like to invite the stormwater committee.
And, and if they for some reason say no, then tell them plan on a second visit, because we're going to do it, I agree, before the bugs really get to take over.
We're still waiting for the strawberry field sidewalk. We're waiting for the mosquitoes to go away.
Oh, when they have that influx of those creepy spider things that are going to drop out of the sky, have you heard about that one?
Yeah, but they don't, they don't hurt you or your pets.
Who wants them dropping on you?
What was sent out, has he rebutted back from the applicant?
No, other than he reached out and said, "We'll take care of this."
Okay.
That was it. But he hasn't, he hasn't scheduled any. I think they're waiting to schedule the test pits after it's staked out, so they know where we're going to be, and then they're going to do that. So right now, I think during this holding pattern for the stake, you have to be done, so.
Okay, so this will be on the agenda for the next month. We all set with Forest Hills, then? Hunter's Hill?
I just, one more thing about Forests.
Yes.
We might be out there in full season.
Perfect. Peepers are peeping, if anybody cares.
And the pussy willows are in bloom. And I've got a whole bunch of crock eye in bloom, so.
Crock eye.
Spring is here. And that, did you hear that laugh? That was from Mr. Ferry, the guy in charge of weather.
Weather? Oh, weather.
Weather.
So I can take my snow stakes out of my driveway and I can say that?
Right. I wouldn't know that, but.
Forget April Fool's Day.
I went around, straightened all mine up again, because I figured...
So in other words, we have the...
Next week's.
Living farmers' home, that?
Yes, or you should write your own comment on it. That would be pretty cool. One of our April Fool's storms that we plowed was 72 degrees the day before.
It was. I took all the plates off 17 trucks and put them right back on the next day.
Where are we with Hunter's Hill? Does anybody know anything about, anything new?
We've had nothing new presented to the planning board. That means, as we speak, so I would anticipate them coming before... Or contributions comments also, so.
Yeah, and we haven't gotten back to...
I know.
Yeah, they haven't gotten back to us about doing any test pits or anything for Grange, because it's the same thing. I think they're waiting for the wetlands to be done. There's some fighting going on between whether the wetlands are bordering or isolated and how to, how to get from point A to point B, just to get the wetland line done so that we can move on to the rest of it, so.
Is that on your agenda for tomorrow night?
It is first.
Are they coming in?
Yes, I'm told that Evan Watson will be there, yeah.
That's the engineer.
Until you're not to read the letter?
No, no. Evan asked him not to come tomorrow night.
Oh, you asked him not to come? Gee, I'm forward to meet, looking forward to meeting him. Okay, so Hunter's Hill will be on for the next... Should we pick a date to set a meeting, assuming it doesn't snow, to go over the bylaw and regs? Sometime before the next meeting or after the next meeting? Next meeting is April the 20th.
How many carryovers do we have from this meeting next month? Follow them? No, we got a couple.
They had our front, huh?
We also, for our next regular meeting, we're going to set us... We also, for our next regular meeting, we're going to set aside some time to meet with individuals from the County Pleasant Street area for the problem down there.
Mr. He
Oh, okay.
So I, you hear the agenda? And just explain to him that we're a in-person individual meeting. And he said that would be great to go onto his properties. He felt that would be fine that way to see what's there is through his property.
That raises a good issue because the only property we looked at as a committee was Mr. Enos's property. So should we schedule a site visit for Kukunbawa and Vaat?
Yeah, before the bugs and the bugs.
As long as they've given us permission to be on their property, yes.
Mrs. Grass, would you get in touch with Mr. Kukunbawa and ask if he would allow the committee to come on site? And then the other person is the other Mr. Enos, who was not here today. I think he's related to the
Brothers.
Was he, they're brothers? If you contact them and whoever says yes, we'll visit. Whoever says no, we won't visit. Okay? And then once we know that, we can send out an email and see what we can do again before the bug season comes. Everyone needs time to take a look at where they are with the regs and if you haven't done any scribbling on it, and then also look at the Audubon. So do you want to look at a date before or after the next meeting? Anybody have any thoughts on that?
I just want to clarify one thing. If that visits and meet with the I'm going to do this for the fall anyway.
Right, so we've got, we can buy some time. All right, let's hold off setting a date for that one because we've got, we'll see what we can get set up for a site visit to County and Pleasant Street and
Set up a visit.
Yes, and Mr. Vaat said, okay, if the other two individuals say no, that's fine.
When I spoke with Mr. Kukunbawa when he came into the office, he said that would be fine, but I will reconfirm that.
Okay. Ask them for some potential dates because I would assume they want to be there.
Yes, they would.
Okay, and we can let Concom know?
Thanks.
Like we did for the other property?
Hey, thanks for the help. That's all we can get.
So make a note for the next agenda to set a date for the, I'll call it the workshop on bylaw and regs, please. Are there any agents reports? Agent Ferry, he's, he's going like this.
What time is it? Twenty, so you get an hour.
No, no, no. No, no, no.
Couple things we started sprinkling up. We can start with something sidewalks, center street sidewalks. Also, the second thing, kind of leading, we're going to Brick Street, that involves Lisa for the wetland restoration for that COVID. Hopefully we'll wrap that up soon.
That's great. You don't need me to come the other morning.
You don't want to see it when it's done.
Hopefully it's right.
Yeah, you don't want to see how we do it. You just want to see it stuck.
That's to restore around the culvert?
Wetland restoration, yes.
Oh, wetlands, okay. Else from the gentleman about the potential use of that property up there? You know, he was talking about a, like a
No, nothing. It's going to be like a Retreat. Yeah.
Retreat spot, whatever.
Yeah, no follow-up.
The agent reports, is that it, Mr. Ferry?
That's it at this time.
Make a long-range weather forecast?
I have one, just real quick. Oh, go ahead. Dave, Colin and I have been going back and forth, I guess, because I missed the pre-construction meeting for Clearway and they're staking out. I guess the stakeout's complete and anytime, well, of course, anytime I want to take a walk, we can. But I'm trying to go and meet with the person in charge of the K. I guess she's in charge of the erosion control. And she's back next Tuesday, so it's hoping to meet with her either Tuesday. So if anybody wants to join me, they can
Yeah, because I know we asked about cutting the trees and I said, not until you've got erosion toll and everything else up. And I honestly thought it was going to be like this week or last week that they were starting, but it seems like the staking is slowing them down.
It's delay.
So you think it's the 23rd or sometime next week?
I reached out to Dave during the meeting and though he told days away until Monday, I said, and then I responded, she's on the email chain.
Okay.
Maybe Tuesday. I heard a response.
Okay.
It's not, you know, instead of first day.
Okay, I'd like to go. The only thing I can see in front of me right now is Wednesday, the 23rd at 11:00 a.m. I have Board of Assessors during the day. So those would be the only things that, that would be the only thing I'm looking at for this point.
You can blow that meeting off.
Huh?
You can blow that meeting off.
Thought I was going to do that this week. Unfortunately, they were waiting because I had gotten a message about a family member who was seriously ill and I missed MMA and I was going to miss assessors. And when I got here, they were waiting because there was only one member here. So I made the quorum so we could have it. So in any case. The only, yeah, I can do, the only thing, the only date I've got during the day is 11:00 a.m. Board of Assessors. That usually goes hour and a half to two hours, although I don't think it should take too long because we finished all the abatement applications, which usually takes a while. So
So if you think two hours is taking a while, what do you think the stormwater meeting is, just out of curiosity?
There's many agenda items, but sometimes abatements take a long time and you have to do them in executive session. There's a lot of stuff to consider. So any other agent, excuse me, reports? Jim?
It's, it's sort of relevant because all the players are in the room. I received an email from someone, the Brook Street Solar, who was complaining that the construction side was obstructing their view. Sorry, but initially I thought maybe I would ask nothing. sign it is? Do you think we could relocate it? She wasn't really upset, but she said it does make it difficult for
Why not? So
No, it can go up. It's eye level right now. That's why it's a problem.
So can we raise them up?
Either go up or go on a pole and pull a tree in front of it.
How do you want me to handle?
Up or on a pole.
I'm sorry?
Up or on a pole.
But you collaboration with them on that?
I can't remember who.
Can you just move it? Is that something you can do?
Not a sign.
Yeah. It's on public property, isn't it?
They heard, please.
I thought, it's been up there all this time. I wouldn't have waited that long. When it went up and obstructed my view, I'd say, can you move it a little because I can't see?
Right. You are right.
But in any case, Mr. Ferry's in charge of signs too. That's under weather.
That's how you help.
Weather's up here.
Yes, sir. Can make a move?
I couldn't, but I was afraid.
Does anyone, any other agent reports about anything?
Tom, you're going to take care of that?
Do we have any correspondence of any kind?
Yeah, I was going to ask that. Something about the railroad bed from Center all the way down to High Street. Well, it's my understanding that the state of Massachusetts owns the Center Street that runs through Sweet Mall and I think it ends somewhere right around behind Jack Torres's house on County Street. So if he's saying that we should go after every abbot who's been on the railroad tracks, what I'm asking is that can the committee do the research to know site? This is all from here to here to here. And because those are abbots who are on County Street, that railroad bed was never bought by anyone. It was, it was this time, so they have the rights to their railroad bed. That's why we're in a situation where we're in. Further down.
But it doesn't matter who owns it. It's the fact that there's a waterway and people are filling it. Whether the railroad still owns it or the electric company owns it, doesn't matter.
He thinks it has been gone all Center Street head himself.
Well, that's why I stopped him because this is telling me that's the new defense. Before it was, you got to get everybody in the neighborhood, which we did. And then this was the latest. But my other thought was, Mr. Ferry and I had to deal with who owned that railroad when the sidewalk was going in on Center Street. And I got a letter from the lady who's in charge of District Five saying, you know, other than the fact that the state's not paying for that sidewalk, go ahead. So we had to get permission. So it's, that is definitely stated.
That is drone usage. If we get approval for drone usage, that drone can fly basically
They only owns up to the high houses.
Now I know.
Now, when you're flying drones, yes, you could fly a drone there, but what are you going to do when you take a picture of? That's, that's where you need to know what you're doing.
Women's. How is a real estate agent get away with it by going flying a drone over my house under 500 feet and saying that 316 Main Street was silly, even though I didn't get this guy permission to do the flight of drone? So how do these people get away with?
Mr. Ryan's, what's even more intrusive? Few years ago, I looked out, there's people out on the street taking pictures of my home. And I asked them what they were doing. And they said, well, we're getting, you know, neighborhood pictures so we can propose houses for sale. And I said, but none of these houses are for sale. But this was before the boom that just happened, ongoing. And I said, but I didn't give you permission, okay? I did call the police and they did respond and they took no action. And yet I'm thinking, they're taking pictures of my house for advertising purposes? Give me a break. And now, so the drone thing is just an add-on to that. I agree, there's a, there's certainly a question about privacy. I mean.
Google does it every day.
Yeah.
I think your suggestion was spot on.
Right, and these are going to be individual. I'm not going to have bickering neighbors sitting in here accusing you of this and you called this and you did that. No, not getting into it. That's why today specifically was, we want to tell you what the problem is and what the rules are that we're trying to enforce. And then we'll meet with you individually. But yeah, he's, he's ready to go. The other thing too is, once we hear from Aggie, assuming it's going to be, yes, the drones can do certain things like flying down the river and checking out falls or looking at reserve areas that he's talking about, I'm sure we're going to have to develop a policy with the school, the county, if you will, and the town, a policy on how the drones will be used because in effect, we've got to protect both parties from liability. So we're going to have to work all that out. So again, we're, right now, we're, we're waiting to find out. I know she also mentioned the New Bedford Airport. I think the plant, the drones come out of there or something. So there's a lot to it and FAA is involved, but we'll see what can be done and, and I'm sure we'll have a policy and we'll be taking it to the town and whatever else we have to do.
So. Comment about the areas. You already have public info, satellite imagery going back to 1961 and beyond, actually.
I want to understand what the difference is if you're going off a satellite for everything the town's doing off of, off of now, just for the assessments, the door, then why is that not illegal? Right?
Is it the residents?
I don't, I don't know. I just right? I think they're in by a case by case basis individually.
I, I not here, but in my previous employment and I was talking or something about my neighbors doing this, I'm talking you would enable it if it's all you do right now.
And another thing, it's just not filling. It's the type of stuff that was dumped in there. We, we've seen some of it. It's not all yard clippings and, you know, grass. It's looked like maybe construction debris or other junk. But so, no, so they're going to be individual, okay? It's, I don't know if we're going to have more attorneys coming in. Personally, I don't think we need attorneys, but if they want to hire them, it's, they're dying by the same token.
I have one more thing
Yes.
Of course. After the meeting, I actually, well, after we heard from Mr. Enos, I reminded his attorney in an email that the Conservation Commission doesn't want a response and needs to know an update prior to our meeting tomorrow night, that enforcement order is not an open-ended thing and that we reserve the right to issue fines. I don't want to go down really, but if it wasn't approximately, it's going to be a situation like
Install with whatever we can throw at you to further delay it. And quite frankly, whatever the Conservation Commission has to do that's separate and distinct from this committee is fine because you've got things that you have to enforce, just like we have. And the, I think it was apparent that his attorney was wishing he would stifle himself at one point. He said, let me talk. But that was another thing when he started up again. And I said, no, we're not going to discuss this. He's not going to be doing that.
I don't want to discuss that topic any further, anywhere further here, only because I have my comments recast today. And my comments, I'll say this on camera, is that you can calm your pants down. It is about you and not about everyone else. The target is you. And all of a sudden it's, well, what about everybody else? Well, unfortunately, you can calm your pants.
And now it's up to Center Street, which we know is not applicable because of what Mr. Ferry said, so.
The only thing I'll say is that if they come to a problem like this and you're a part of it,
They're not coming to us.
Right.
They're just coming here.
But they're still trying to mediate the situation. But before I started finding, I want to get clarification from them, whether or not they plan on doing anything.
Right. I
Yeah, I think it's important they understand and certainly attorney will. Separate and distinct, there are things you must reply to the Concom about. And there were timelines involved with orders that we issue. And the fact that you're before the Stormwater Committee doesn't mean it's going to be an automatic extension on the spot of Concom, right? As I said, the attorney will know that, right? Also, are there either agent reports or public input or anything, Mr. Pilling?
I'd like to stop doing Zoom meetings. Just go live in-person meetings. The governor's order only goes through June, that you have to have. Open numbers have been bad enough that we should do it, but I, if somebody wants to call in, they can call in, but the whole recording and the whole meeting and maybe hearing all the problems with the microphones and everything else. I think we should just go in-person meetings and in extreme circumstances, allow somebody to appear on that camera.
Yeah, I agree. And as long as they can call in, like we have somebody in Canada who periodically zooms in, I think we give them advance notice and say that we are not going to be broadcasting. If, if the committee agrees, we're not going to be doing this. And you will still have access. You can call in and we'll have a speakerphone or some other hookup here. But yeah, I, I think so. Does anybody?
No, I would just ask that we have a speakerphone set up here. There's an internet jack there. I have all the phone lines. All our phone lines. Internet protocol, so. Can we check with?
We need it for other meetings. It's not all about us.
Exactly.
Should be here.
Exactly.
But they, they could still do the Zoom like we've been doing. It's just not the entire meeting being recorded and all that. They could still.
I don't think we should do half and half. No, I think the speaker. I think going to a speakerphone, and we may not have anybody. I'm only thinking of people who are out of state or out of the country that have to weigh in on something that we can accommodate.
And then, and then we'd be easy to use this with a screen share. Like, I couldn't put my iPad on this today. Circle or whatever.
Yeah, but trying to do it while you're in the middle of a Zoom meeting is very difficult. We've seen it at the select meetings. They struggle and everything, so yeah.
I think I just do a lot with the. Sound barriers on either side. Still, just too much of a.
Well, two, in all honesty, I have yet to see a Zoom presentation I could read. Even on my, my desktop and I, my laptop, and I bring it up this close and it's not my eyes. It's the print is so small or I'm looking at a diagram and it's like, you gotta be kidding me. I can't read that. Or a budget sheet that's this long. And the, the numbers are, you know, miniscule. It's extremely difficult. Any correspondence?
So is, do we need a motion to do that or are we just?
It's not on the agenda. I think we can.
As long as, check with the board of selection on the phone, but also find out if they have any concerns. If there's any kind of a rule that says we have to or we don't have to, if it's a committee decision.
I spoke with Mike Wallen about this a week or so ago. And he said that. There's nothing that says you have to. That we do offer both?
Well, I think we offer both using the speakerphone. You don't have to see the person who's talking and identify themselves. They state whatever, they respond to questions, they have input live. So it sounds to me it's more like a consensus. So I will just ask. Show of hands, is of everyone present, not only the committee. Show of hands, is the consensus is that our next regular monthly meeting will be done. Live and with a speakerphone for outside contact. Everyone that's.
Before we do, what's the, just a question. So I'm just posing a question. What's been the recommendation about local buildings out?
We haven't made a recommendation.
It's the record, it's on the doors.
It's on the doors anymore. It's, it's. Even the state says if you're not vaccinated, you should do it, but it's, they're backing way down on it all. But the Board of Health hasn't made anything above what the state has said.
Not to say this, you know, with all the meetings we've had with the board. And you can't, you cannot understand who's on, on the line with you. In-person, so.
And the last thing I've seen anywhere is, the only requirements for masks are if you ride the T or if you enter a medical facility. A doctor's office, obviously a hospital, a clinic or whatever.
I think airplanes still too.
Yeah, public transportation or whatever. Those are the only ones that I actually heard spelled out. And they all say, if you're comfortable wearing a mask, feel free to do it, but the requirement's not there.
Did I see a fourth vaccine?
There's talk about it from Pfizer.
The booster shot only lasts 10 weeks, so.
But the only one I'm hearing is Pfizer, so I don't know the story with Moderna. But anyhow. Did we have any correspondence?
I thought you were looking for the hand raising.
Oh, yes. And we'll go back to the hand raise. Consensus that we go to. Live?
I'm tired of having to get up and talk to that dude.
Tim's got one and a half. But he's saying it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so that, we'll do that.
Yeah, the only other thing on the public information, I wanted to thank Barbara for coming to this meeting. We've had a lot of people that come to one meeting and never come for a second one. She's now been here for two, so.
I like the cookies and the pizza.
Oh, well, she, she.
But not for long. Until we make a chairman of the Board of Health.
She, she might not be back again because now I'm gonna put her on the spot. So you've been to a couple of meetings. Give us a quick impression of Stormwater.
It's important. It's important. I love you guys. This is a great group.
Can I ask her first?
What?
I think she talks too much.
You know me, right?
She never said what she thought of it.
Very important, very broad. Okay, it's a good broad.
Interesting.
Very interesting.
Important stuff. Not to put words in your mouth.
No, no, it's true. It's true. It's a lot more than what I even imagined. So, so is the Board of Health.
Motion to approve the minutes of February 16th. Oh, I'm sorry, Ross. Thank you.
The great idea. Two. They could be for those two. There's. 12 inches, the nine inch, she said is the most popular. I asked for colors, possibly blue and. Pink is not an option.
It doesn't sound like it matters.
So the. 42 apiece. 500. It's an assorted color pack. That would be. We have to order like.
So what would 500 cost us?
You're not gonna just.
I say 500, is that what's, that's what we did with calendars? And we got those out and. The.
Oh, we, it was a setup fee. Price, can we take that into?
So. If we bought 500, that would handle a few events, because that's what we usually do. I've got, I got bags. I got some clips. The only thing we really got rid of, obviously, was the calendars.
Got some bags. You've got like 12 cases of down at a break room.
Well, that's because I did give some out before and I, the food bank asked for 50 and I said, yeah, go ahead and take those. The Lions Food Club Bank, but other than that.
Took a few of those bags at the transfer station.
And they don't go bad, so it's not like, we, we were prepared to have events. And the only event that I really had was, well, I had two, but not the volume. I had the July thing, the Fourth of July firecracker, whatever. And then there was the.
Tree lighting.
Lights on. But those aren't the volume events like Cow Chip and the Arts Festival. So I'm planning to do Cow Chip and Arts Festival. I don't know if they're doing Firecracker again. I probably won't. If I do Cow Chip, because they're too close together. And it's, they like to see two a year. And I'd like to go back to our old schedule if we could. Jim?
So we have to rent a table at the Arts Festival as well?
Oh, no, we don't rent.
We don't rent?
No, I already set the table up for the Lions. And for the Cow Chip, it'll be on Saturday and. The president of the Lions Club told me, anything you want, anytime. How about that, Mr. Ferry? Mr. Ferry never said that.
So.
The new president.
Yeah, he's a nice guy.
You had said town logo, but this is educational.
Seal that's on the bags. The.
Yeah.
That.
Yeah. And what about the educational part? It needs to say something about.
Stormwater logo, be the solution.
Oh.
Like we use.
Still a logo for the price.
It's a logo, right. So one logo. So whatever you wanna put on it, we can.
And one color. If you can, if you wanna do four.
Oh, no, no, we won't do colors. Find out. Is this the same outfit that we got bags from?
Yep.
Say to him, the logo that the town uses is the town seal with the wording, be the solution, da, 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 da. That is a logo. If he says that's not a logo, we say, oh, yes, it is. Because it needs the town seal to show it's from the town of Dayton.
Yep.
As part of our program. And you've gotta have an educational message.
So what's on the bags now? Isn't that what the town?
Yes, tell him the logo is, is, is the package deal, the seal and the wording. We're not separating those. In other words, tell him the logo is exactly what's on the bags.
Tom, you're reordering the exact same logo you used on the bags.
So the cost of having to set it up through 500 bags and ship them, it looks like it's gonna be less than $700.
Do they have?
With the discount?
Have a setup fee even though they already have the logo?
Yeah, because it's a different. Matrix. Yeah, Frisbees is hard plastic. Bags are silkscreen. This is probably a stamp.
So what he said is, is the Stormwater.
That's exactly what we want. But make sure you say to him, I'm gonna send you that because I want it to look like this. So you make sure you send the seal and the wording, okay? The wording can either be bent around the seal or it can be straight across. We don't care which one. But say to him, it needs identification, which is the town seal, and it has to have an educational message. And it's required by the, the educational program that we're doing for EPA compliance, must be that way, so.
Okay.
All right? Okay, so.
If you could buy, make them out of recycled plastic, it'd be even better.
Everything's recycled now.
This for quite a while. Mr. Ferry, do we have money?
Hundred thousand, definitely not above.
You say a hundred thousand?
No, I said a hundred thousand instead.
Hundred.
Oh, okay, all right.
Kind of like hundred thousand.
Okay, too bad.
So are we going with the assorted colors, assorted colors, the like?
Is that how you get your pink?
No, pink.
No.
You can tell me what the assortment was.
The bags, what are the bags? Are they green this time? They blue again?
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't we go with green? A nice green, not, not, not.
With a forest green, not a lime green?
I think so many colors would work well for this, for this project.
Well, I thought it was just 100 that was assorted colors.
Right, but if we're gonna get 500, I would think we could just get five.
If there's no additional charge. Pick different colors. If there's, if the 100 deal is you get assorted colors, that tells me those are all the leftovers that they couldn't use, all right? If there's extra charge for assorted colors, don't go with it. Pick a color. You can have.
Okay.
And the 500, with an order of five. Say 100 of each color and then we can just pick five colors.
You probably have to.
So.
Blue for the summer months because it signifies Fourth of July and the flags. That's just.
Yep. So if, I could get a motion that we authorize Mrs. Grassi to place an order. Because we get that March 31st deadline. And to report back to us at the April meeting.
She's authorized up to a certain dollar amount or something.
Hundred thousand, I heard it.
Cap on that motion, like saying she's authorized up to a certain amount or just?
Mr. Treasurer?
500 Frisbees.
How much money are we talking about?
Are you still, that can cover that, even though it's not it, you know, it covers the other line.
Right, so pick a number.
I mean, I believe you still got 7,500 in there.
Okay. Okay. All right, so I think it's reasonable to say. Up to 1,000, which I don't think.
Shouldn't be any.
No, I don't. All right, so we're gonna get 500 with the logo. Pick the colors. Oh, shipping, we want them here by the end of May if possible.
Okay.
Because it's the first full weekend in June. That Cow Chip is gonna be here.
Okay.
All right, so this will be tentative. She'll report back at the next meeting and we'll just wrap everything up. But this way she can get the order in so we can get the discount. All right?
Before Memorial Day, yeah. Before Memorial.
We need them before Memorial Day.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Mr. Tabey?
Hi.
Aye.
Aye.
His head, say an aye. Aye.
Thank you, Mrs. Grassi.
Okay, thank you, Ross. Because I said, remind me of this, so thank you very much. Approval? Approval of the minutes of February 16th and 23rd?
Yes.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Reins. Aye. Hey, before we adjourn, does anyone know? Now, if you, if you heard me talking about this in the health office yesterday, you can't respond. Does anyone know the significance of what happened this week and the three colors that are in that? Oh, you can't.
I wasn't in there.
No.
I had already wished a happy day to my son, so.
I don't know. I mean, you said with the Aids Amat, maybe, I don't know.
He was eavesdropping. 314 was Pi. 15th was the Aids Amat and nobody got that one. And then the 17th is St. Patrick's Day. So the green is for St. Patrick's. The orange is for the people in Northern Ireland, the Orangemen. And the white signifies all the people that lost their lives battling over religious issues and everything else that happened. And if you remember back how bad it was with the bombings and all that stuff.
I use that all?
Motion to adjourn? We got a motion, second?
I'll second.
Oh, we have a second on motion? All in favor?
I did a second today. Aye, 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 aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Please adjourn. Thank you, everybody.
They also have the Strawberry Festival too this year.
Yeah, that's the, that's the historical commission, so I haven't done anything there because the biggest crowds turn out for the Lions.